Aren't you ready? No, she's not here. All right, y'all ready? All right, I want to welcome everybody to the April 1st, 2025 meeting. We're getting a little late start. It's 6:03. Can I get approval of the agenda, please?
Send me.
A second. Second, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Tonight, we've got, as always, an honor for Pastor Haney from Chapel from Jones County. Sheriff's Department is going to open us up and lead us in a pledge.
As we pledge allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you join me as we pray? Gracious God, you've been our help in ages past and our hope for years to come. We give you thanks as we gather this evening for the commissioners to do the people's work. We ask your guidance for them as they do this work on behalf of the citizens of Jones County. Lord, we live in an imperfect world and an imperfect society. Forgive them, Lord, when they mess up and give us grace when they do mess up to offer forgiveness. Dear Father, help the citizens of Jones County to give encouragement and to this commission and appreciation for their work. Lord, we're so grateful to live in a wonderful place. We pray for our commissioners. We pray for those who work for the county. We pray for our sheriff's department, for Public Works, for those who keep our streets clean and all the work that needs to be done in order to provide for us a wonderful life. We thank you, dear Father, for recreational areas for our children and our youth to keep them off the streets. We pray now, dear Father, that you will guide them and direct them in their work, guide us in our lives, Lord, that we may seek to be better citizens in Jones County because we love this place and we want it to be the best that it can be. Lord, bless this work tonight. In your name we pray. Amen. The only thing I can say, Mr. Chairman, is that we need charging stations for e-bikes around the county. I'll dismiss with that. All right, thank you, sir. Always honored to have you here. Thank you. All right, thank you. We're getting ready.
Appreciate your work for those who, for a work that sometimes goes unappreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for everything you do for the county. Thank you. All right, we're going to start planning his own. And if anybody here tonight is in opposition for any of these requests, you will get opportunity to speak. Mr. Potowski?
Chairman, our first item is a request by Oak Mulgee Property LLC. It's a proposal to amend the approved planned unit development for River North to allow 32 fee simple townhomes on 5.2 acres. This is located at 632 River North Boulevard, and it's at the rear of River Point condominiums. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this request.
Okay. Somebody here tonight with Oak Mulgee Properties to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cholres Adams, and I'm here on behalf of Oak Mulgee Property, too, for this townhome development. That's before you all. This is a fee simple, single-family attached development located on 5.2 acres adjacent to the River Point, existing River Point condominiums off of River North Boulevard. You should have in front a site design as well as floor plans for those units that are planned, as well as the platte record and the agreement reached with the River North Homeowners Association containing the terms and conditions in which the developer and homeowners association will work together to develop this property and the associated restrictions based on their recommendations. I'm not sure if you guys have read through this or not. I can go through it again, but like I said, this is adjacent to the existing River Point condos, so this would extend the attached building style. These will be governed by the River Communities Association guidelines. Architectural controls will be in place. These will be served by County Water and Sewer, Georgia Power for electricity, and GFL for trash service. And this is designed to provide full-time permanent housing for residents. Renting will not be permitted unless at the discretion of the River Communities Board during a situation of hardship. So it's designed to be permanent, full-time housing, and these will be fee simple units. It will not be condos. So if you look at the site design, we have about 5.2 acres of area, which about three and a half acres will remain as open space. 25-foot vegetative buffer will exist around the perimeter of the property, and each clusters of townhomes will be separated by a minimum of 15-foot wooded buffer, most of those exceeding that amount. So it's designed purposefully to be a lower-density development and in keeping with the character of that neighborhood. It will be utilized neutral earth tones for those paint colors, and the efforts will be made to preserve as many trees as possible during that development stage. There's two different floor plans that are proposed. One's a three-bed, three-bath, 1,634-square-foot plan. That'll be on 18 lots in that development. The second plan is a three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath at 1,409 square feet, and that'll be utilized on 14 lots. That one actually comes with a master on main and a two-car garage. So while they are similar in character, they provide different attributes to appeal to the different types of buyers that will want to be in this full-time development. This location makes this a very logical development, given its size and it's adjacent to already the existing condominiums. It's sat vacant since the school was constructed there in the 70s, so it has not really been providing any economic value beyond property taxes for that duration of time. So at completion of it, you'll have nearly $40,000 in annual dues. That'll go to River North, 32 new customers for Water and Sewer, and 32 new taxpayers. And it'll now be under an actual unit and not just a one property owner. River North isn't a PUD in any time. And the development's introduced. There does have to be a PUD amendment that was recommended for approval at the March meeting by Jones County P&amp;Z. So any questions you guys have?
Any questions?
Happy to answer them.
Commissioner Kishen, this is your...
Yeah. First of all, I like the design. I like the plan. It's definitely needed. I think it will benefit that community. So all of that, I agree with and like it. We've talked about it before with needing to get the agreement. I think it was supposed to come to us one time before we got the agreement or something.
That's done. That was presented at P&amp;Z, yeah.
The only thing that I have concerns on, and I know we talked about it before, was the water and sewer capacity. Have we resolved that?
Yes, so we met with County Administrator, Water and Sewer Superintendent, the County Engineer. That was on March 11th to discuss those options, which will go for our engineering study. Since then, a six-inch water line has been identified next to the condos, so most likely that will be tapped onto. For sewer, there's two options, one of which is the current lift station is expanded, which was planned at one time, and/or grinder pumps at each unit that will make it up to a manhole that's been identified. So engineering will tell us exactly what we'll require. But right now, those are the two options on sewer. And then water, we will be tapping into that six-inch line.
And that'll all be part of your design?
That'll all be part of, yeah, engineering designs. It will be water and sewer utility location.
Have we approved one in the past before we get the water and sewer design?
Because I think our lift station's only capable of taking care of what's there now. That's the one we're trying to make.
Yeah, and that was the issue we had before. We need to make sure we can handle what's coming out of it, you know?
And that's what those engineering designs will say. But generally, for these, it'll be planning and zoning approval, commission approval, at which point that'll be my cost to go through those engineering designs, which will be, you would, I would imagine, have to review or P&amp;Z would have to review prior to anything else taking place.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, I just don't remember approving one before we get into the sewer side of it identified. Again, I agree with the plan. I like the plan. I just wonder if this is something we need to get that designed before we make a final approval or approve contingent on the water and sewer?
Contingent, sir.
Or do we need to table it until water and sewer comes back and approve it all at one time? Or potentially approve it? I'm speaking as one vote. So I have this question for Tim.
Typically, engineering could run into many thousands of dollars, and normally, our process is zoning approval, then before permitting takes place, those kind of engineering reviews, and that takes place. So if that falls apart, no building permit would have been issued for the project.
Those are the only questions I have, was the capacity issue.
I was concerned about that, too, because that's that same lift station that we keep having so much problem with right there.
Right.
That would be feeding in on this with these 32...
It's not going to handle it. I mean, it's going to have to be... I'm sure there's going to be another lift station to accommodate these because what we've got in there now, several times I've been in it, is just covering what we've got now.
Commissioner Martin, you...
I was going to ask, so is he going to be responsible for the upgrades? Or will their special tax allocation district be responsible for that?
I don't think there's money in that special tax allocation, is it, Justin?
No, really, all that's accounted for there right now is just debt service, on the existing debt.
I know we talked about approaching them for that part, expanding their system, because this was going to be one of those needs, so...
Yeah, I think the approach in him is to redo what's there now because I think that's in its life, you know, end of life on that. There's a lot of needs there. So I think that's going to be re-up and not expansion. It's just redoing what's there. So, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to be your funding, right?
Well, I mean, I think there's two separate options here, and that's what we've met on, you know, that are for there. So depending on the county's plans, you know, that's you guys'... I don't know if there were funds allocated for that project or not. But, you know, having two options, I think we'll be able to come to some sort of resolution on that. And then that, again, will, engineering will dictate what that can handle, what would be needed if an upgrade was needed, if a new system could handle it, or if the grinder pump option would be the best route to take, which would be the developer's expense, so it would not be a county expense.
Commissioner Martin, you make a point. Every development I ever done, it was, it's on me to put in the, anything needed on utilities, including lift stations, which I had to do that one time, too. But it would obviously be on the developer if needed because what we got now is not, it's not going to handle it. It's just a bare minimum. You know, we've been trying to get fixed for quite some time.
Mr. Wood, any question?
I agree. I just don't know if it's already there because, you know, I don't know if it's already down the street for his...
No, it would never make a pass engineering if it does not work.
Mr. Stone, anything else on you?
Well, just the thought of this, what, 96 bathrooms?
Yep.
That's a lot of intake for something that we know is already at capacity, so...
Yeah, and that's why we can't, there's two separate options to move forward on that, and that's very understood, that the existing infrastructure would not support it. So upgrades will need to be made to accommodate. That is definitely, that is known by my side and Water and Sewer as well. So I think we're on the same page there.
If the motion, we can make a motion to approve contingent on the engineering for water and sewer capacity based on the project.
I think, Tim, can we work that into the rezoning piece of it? Or should the motion be tailored such that they approve the rezoning with the understanding that that'll be addressed at a later stage of the development process? How should that be worded, I guess, is the question?
I would recommend that the motion be made and that a condition be placed that before permitting is allocated or approved for the project, that water and sewer issues have been resolved satisfactorily for the county.
Okay.
Did you get that, Shannon? Because that's exactly what my motion was going to be.
We can't take a motion yet. We'll see if there's no... Any more questions for... All right, anybody here tonight in opposition for this request? No one in opposition on the request tonight?
Second.
You got the motion, the second?
Yeah, motion to approve on the condition that the water and sewer engineering is satisfied.
You got a second, Commissioner Martin? Any more discussion?
Before permitting?
Yeah. You got it? Any more discussion? All in favor of I? Nice having it. All right, thank you. Mr. Potowski, next up.
Chairman, our next item is a request by Nelson Buckland. It's to allow a conditional use to allow a paving company at 107 Bone Creek Road. The portion of the property for the conditional use is zoned C2. Balance of the property is zoned C1 and R1. Planning Commission has recommended denial of this request, three to one. This request rose from a complaint filed with my office. We let Mr. Buckland know that operating a paving company was not permitted at this location under the C2 zoning, and subsequently, he submitted this request.
Mr. Buckland, you here?
Hi, how you doing? Good. So, yeah, I tried to get into contact with some of the neighbors after the last meeting, really after, out in the hallway, and tried to talk things. If you don't know what's going on, no communication, you can't do nothing about it, you know? And so I'm not hard to get along with. If I can get an entrance approved to come off of Joy Cliff onto my property, I could do that, and I would still pave Bone Creek free of charge. And all I want to do is be able to come into my property. It's no business ran out of there. It's parking a dump truck and a trailer. It comes in at 7:30 in the morning, I mean, comes out at 7:30 in the morning, sometimes 5:30, 6:30, 7 o'clock in the evening. You know, we try to, we don't try to aggravate nobody, you know, by backing it in there, but how valuable is somebody's life to wait 30 seconds or maybe 60 seconds to back a dump truck in without anybody getting hurt? And that's what we do. So we will block the road for somebody to back in because we have had people come down through there wide open as we're trying to back in. And we don't want them to get hurt, and I want my guys to get hurt. And so I just want to be a good neighbor and try to make everybody happy and live in peace. But I do have... I had EPA call once over hazardous material by one of my neighbors, and it's shout. It gets stains out of clothes and grease out of dump trucks. It's not hazardous. If it is, Walmart got to quit selling it. So that's it. If they would come down and say, hey, Mr. Buckland, what are you spraying? There's a guy right here there from 7:30 in the morning, sometimes 10 o'clock at night. Not one. Not one person has walked down and said, hey, we need this done. Now, there is one nice gentleman, Mr. Sinclair. Sometimes our mail get mixed up, and you say, come down and bring the mail down there, you know? But not one time have we had one person come down and say, hey, you're causing a problem. This is going on. We don't like it. If you don't communicate, you don't know. And so all I want to do, I don't want no hard feelings with nobody. I just want to use my shop. I want to use my parking lot. I want to get in and get out without hurting anybody, you know, no arguments or nothing like that. That's all I want. And if I can get an entrance off of Joy Cliff, I can put one in. I'm in the paving business. I can put one in, put a big covert in, and do what we got to do. I block Bone Creek off, still pay pump Bone Creek from my shop down to the stop sign and make everybody happy. If I got to put my dump trucks inside the shop, I put them inside the shop if they fit. But they don't get moved Saturday and Sunday. They stay put. Monday through Friday, rainy days, sometimes we don't move, you know? Because you can't pave in the rain. But I do, I'm here to make them happy, to do whatever I got to do. I just can't afford to go find somewhere else to buy something else. You know, I've got a lot of money invested in that place, and I rented that place for six years. I rented it for four years. I've owned it almost for two. I bought it from Aaron Burgess almost two years ago. And so I've had no problems, if that I know of. And there's a guy here that's been there ever since I've been there. That's, nobody's come down and said, hey, this is a problem, a neighbor. A neighbor. I think one of the commissioners came down and spoke about something, but I can't even remember what the conversation was about because he spoke with Jim, and nobody spoke to me, you know? But that's all I want. I just want to be able to use my property and nobody get hurt. If we got to block the road off of 30, I mean, how valuable is somebody's life for 30 seconds? If you're not big of a hurry, you better not walk outside because traffic's everywhere we go. That's all I'm saying.
Have you talked with Public Works about putting the entrance in yet?
I talked to Tim the other day, and he said he had to look at, I guess, with Public Works, about putting the entrance in there.
Sure.
You know, and that's no problem. I put it in there and whatever we got to do to do it. And still pave Bone Creek free of charge.
You'll be able to get in, straight in off of...
I believe I will. I believe I make it wide enough, you know? If it's to a point that I couldn't, I'd still pull in and just pull out because I wouldn't even have to go up towards their way. I can make a circle, you know what I mean, go back. And whatever repairs need done on the road, I repair them, you know, free of charge.
Commissioner Martin, this is you.
You know, I talked with him, and I had a talk with one of the residents there. And, you know, I've come down Joy Cliff Road, and if you've ever seen me, I'm the guy on the bike. Okay? So some people give me lane and some people don't. That's okay. Periodically, there may have been, you know, a time when their truck is on the side and people have to move in, but it was no different than going up the road when the uniform company used to block the road, and we'd have to wait until that guy could figure out how to straight line back to go between the fence. Until the past couple of weeks, I never got any calls. So I'm surprised at this because you have been there for a while, and I'm not saying that justifies you should be there, but you've been there for a while operating, and it was just recently that there were something brought up. I think with him willing to make the entrance off the side of the road and repair, that's great. There was a concern that we don't want this business in the front of our subdivision. Well, businesses have always been in the front of the subdivision. They've been on the corner from Joy Cliff Road and Bone Cliff all the way up. So I don't see that as kind of valid. I understand why, because there's dump trucks and it might be different. But the tow company has always been there, and they've always stopped traffic to do whatever they were doing. So I've heard both sides, and again, if he's willing to make the accommodations, I think that's fair.
He said exactly what I was going to say. I think driveway off Joy Cliff, and I don't know of any reason why we couldn't. That's a county road. I don't know why we couldn't permit a covert there. And that would alleviate the blocking of Bone Creek while they're coming in, just come in there and back in. I do agree, him offering to repair the roads is very generous. I don't know if we've ever had a company offer to do that in the past, not since I've been on the board, anyway.
Wish logging companies would do it.
I mean, it ain't a cheap repair either. I mean, it's probably $25,000, for me, my cost, it's probably $25,000 repair, you know? And that ain't what it was... You get any contract out there, give you a price on through it, and it's going to be expensive, you know? So it's going to cost me that money out of my pocket to nobody, but I would do it.
Any more questions? Mr. Wood?
Right, I have a question. Okay. If we move the driveway to Joy Cliff Road, are you able to pull in with your dump truck and trailer, turn around on property and put it back down? I'm just trying to avoid the stopping of traffic and backing in. I'm moving by the property, and it seems like you could pull in, alleyback it, or whatever you, you know, turn it around versus backing in off the street.
Yeah.
Basically doing all your twists and turns on your property.
It's kind of tight in there. That's why we got to, because that trailer's long, so it's hard for me if I'm coming off of Bone Creek to make this. Now, I could probably go down and make the block and come back down to Bone Creek if, you know, I have entrances right now, and then you still have to back because this is only so deep, you know what I mean? But if I make the entrance wide enough on Joy Cliff, if I got to go up and make a couple of jogs and get it around, then ain't nothing that I can't do, you know what I mean? If I can't do it, the most I would have to do is make the circle out of Joy Cliff, out of Bone Creek to go back on there. And that still wouldn't cause no traffic, no more than waiting at a red light, you know?
Any more questions?
I watched the P&amp;Z and took in a couple of things, and I did some research today, too, on different things that were coming in. I know that there is a weight limit sign on that road, so I called our DOT, the transit guys that pull y'all over...
Yes.
...to verify what those signs, what the... And it's, any county road in the state of Georgia, any county road, has a weight capacity of 56,000 pounds on it. If it's got a limit weight sign on it, then it's whatever that is posted, except for pickup, delivery, or home. And if that is your home station for those trucks, then that would be where you deliver your trucks to home. So that would not have a weight class on it. I also did some research on dump trucks, weights, and school buses because that's my specialty, is school buses. So an unloaded school bus is around 27,000 pounds. A loaded school bus is around 30,000 pounds. An unloaded dump truck, the size that you've got there, is around 27 to 30,000 pounds, too. So that's the same as what a bus is. Those are just some things that I wanted to do that research on to find out the difference in. I also found out because of our street ranking that we had ran last year into 2023, Bone Creek was already 180th on our list of roads that need to be repaired. So it's 180 down. So it's not the first on the list. It's 180 down, like most of our secondary streets are because when they were paved 25 years ago, it's probably the last time they've been paved. So they're on that rotation of us getting to it to get them done. So those are just a few of the things that I did research on to find out. And I did find out that that was a company that had been commercial property for at least, I know, 15 years with heavy, a diesel mechanic there. Before that was a cabinet shop, and then you there for the last six years with your trucks and everything. So that's what I was so confused about. I even called Tim to verify some things about the property is already commercial.
Yeah.
So the only thing you were asking for was a conditional use to park your empty vehicles there that do not have any asphalt in them. And that's the big thing right there, no asphalt.
No asphalt.
You're not carrying on asphalt there.
No.
Okay.
When they leave in the morning time at 7:30, they're empty. When they come in at night, they're empty. And the only time they would have a load on to it, it'd go to the side to repave the road in the morning to do it.
Any more questions before we have the... Okay, I'll see. Anybody here opposed to this? We got any women opposed? We got a young lady, we got a young lady in the back. Ladies first. Didn't I have, didn't I have, either one of the ladies? I was doing ladies first. I saw y'all's hands come up. You want to get to somebody else? I just been...
No, I'll take the lady parts. I'm good with that.
Okay.
So my name is Melody Harper, and I live at 123 Bone Creek Road. So I'm actually two down. And I did speak with you a few years ago because we did complain about the end of the road, having the big pothole. And I did speak with you, um, a few years ago, cause we did complain about the end of the road having the big pothole. Um, this is, and I just wanted to show you some of the pictures. Um, this is a picture before he actually paved outside of his driveway that shows the damage on both sides of the road, cause it's right at the end of Bone Creek. And so as you can imagine with those big dump trucks with that long trailer, they've got, I mean, you know, you've gotta make that wide turn, you know? Even when we have a pickup truck with our camper, you know, you make that wide turn to come in. And so that's kind of the damages to the road. So it's hard, you know, you can't move around somebody because of that. Um, and I've got nothing, this is not anything personal. Um, I think some of the reasons why we didn't feel like, I'm not a complainer. I just, I'm not a complainer. Um, but when we got the notice about this, it was like, wow, we actually have a voice. You know, we can actually say something now. So I, I feel like a platform was given for us to stand up and say something. Um, you know, I've lived in that neighborhood for over, trying to think. We moved here when my daughter was nine and she's twenty-eight now. You know, I work in Jones County, I work at the, you know, I'm a nurse at Matty Wells. So, I mean, you know, I love living in Jones County and I love what Jones County offers me. And yes, it has always been commercial. Um, when we moved in, it was vacant. Um, and then I know that that's when the car, the, he came in as a mechanic. And, you know, I mean, at least it provided a service, it was kinda quiet. But then when this kinda moved in, it was like, you know, just seeing the big trucks coming down the road, it is an inconvenience. You know, I try to be a very patient person, but when you're coming off Bone Creek to make that turn and they're blocked right there, then you're sitting on Joy Cliff and people, you know, it's just kind of a backup. So that is kind of an inconvenience, um, you know? And I'm, I believe that we need to have more businesses in Jones County cause that's what's gonna make us thrive, you know? Our son started a business here. So that's just, you know? And I don't know if y'all saw, if y'all have been by it to see the size truck city has, you know, with the big trailers. But, um, and I do understand about, you know, I was the one that was concerned about the weight limit on the roads cause I'm kind of a stickler when it comes to things. Um, so that's just kind of, you know? I just, it's a family neighborhood and it's just, when you have these dump trucks, you know, you just have the safety concerns, so.
Do you feel like the coming in off of Joy Cliff would be the?
For me, yes, because I just think that that way it's keeping it away. Yet we have a lot of, you know, we'll walk in the, cause our subdivision's an H, you know? We, you come in and it's all dead ends. So it's a great place to walk. I mean, you know, we'll get out and we'll walk our dogs. We have a lot of older people that live that'll, that'll walk. You'll have the kids riding their bikes up and down the road. So you just worry, you know, about all that, you know? So it's just, it's just a concern, you know? So, I mean, I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, well, I'm a meanie, so.
I'm a weenie, I understand.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I just, it's just a concern. And like I said, I mean, I love where I live. And so it's just the precedent that I think that is, you know, I just, it's the precedent that I don't want set, you know? And it's just, cause it's like if this comes, then what's gonna be next, you know? And so it's, we're trying to preserve our small little thirty-four house community there, so.
Um, in one of these pictures, I don't know who did these, but I noticed that this is kind of well past his driveway.
That's where the house is. So that's where, so you've got, so you've got the building there and then you've got a house on the property. And so to the right of the house is parked another dump truck. So, and I don't know whose dump truck that is, I don't know. We've met the people that are in the house at one point, cause their dogs got out. Their little dog, little cute little dogs, kinda vicious. Not, but my husband got out, they were in our yard, my husband tried to help get them. Um, and we tried to speak to them, but I don't know if they couldn't understand, you know? I don't know if they spoke.
English.
English, right. Um, but I know that they live in that house. I don't know whose dump truck that is, but I know there is a dump truck parked to the right of that house, not just in the enclosed area.
Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being young.
I think I had another young lady, had her hand up. Now, somebody else wanna come forward? Sir, and then I'll get you in the back.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mark Barnes. I live at one-sixty-five Bone Creek Road. And, uh, I'd like to start off by saying that I am a huge supporter of small business. I believe that that's what America was built on. But I take a serious issue with the idea of that they're trying to be a good neighbor. When I first saw that hole on the right side of Bone Creek Road forming, I took the number off the side of the, um, dump truck and called and said, hey, when you back your trucks and you're going off the road on the right side of the road and you're creating a hole in the road. And the first time that I called them, I was told, oh, that's not my business. Uh, my truck just broke down and they're letting me park it there. So the first time I was lied to. The second time I called, I was told, and this is a quote, F you, I'm a taxpayer, let the county fix it. That, those were the exact words I was told the second time that I called the paving company to complain about the hole that they were creating. Also, I applaud you for Ms. Vaughn for, uh, doing your research on the, uh, dump truck, the truck weight. However, that truck carries with it a, I believe it's a thirty-foot trailer. That trailer contains a CAT two-sixty-five with a weight, uh, empty weight of ten thousand four hundred and ninety-two pounds, a Wyler P two-eighty-five with an empty weight of eighteen thousand pounds, a CAT CB, it's either a one, I'm not sure if it's a one-point-seven, uh, but with a, uh, weight of thirty-eight hundred and twenty-five pounds. And I'm not sure if it's a Big Tex trailer, but it's very comparable to a Big Tex thirty-foot trailer, which weighs sixty-three hundred pounds. That's a grand total of thirty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen pounds. So we're not talking about just a, a dump truck that's violating the weight limit. We're talking about way over double the weight limit.
But what is also the law?
I'm sorry?
What is also the law? That if they're picking up, delivering or home, they can be on that road?
Right, well, like I said, I'm, I'm simply trying to point out to you that this is not simply a dump truck that is violating. This is well over double the weight limit set by the state. And those, I don't believe that those weight limits are set arbitrarily. There's a reason why those weight limits are set. And it's because the road can only take so much. And yeah, I get it, they're only coming in and out. But that means that that section of the road is going to be subject to extreme wear and tear because of the fact that they are always going to be using that section of road. So like I said, between the fact that, no, I don't believe they are a good neighbor. Because like I said, I have tried, I mean, they say that nobody has ever approached them, I have. And I was very, very polite when I did. And like I said, the first time I was lied to, the second time I was cursed at. So I'm sorry, but like I said, I do not believe that they're a good neighbor. I do not believe, I believe that in the long run, you're gonna have problems with Joy Cliff Road. Even if they create a beautiful entryway on Joy Cliff for their business, the rest of Joy Cliff Road is gonna suffer. Bone Creek Road has already suffered and may continue to suffer depending on how that all works out. And I just think it's a bad idea. It's like I said, it's got nothing to do with what kind of business they're running. I don't care about dump trucks, quite honestly. Dump, a dump truck to me is, I mean, you got tow trucks on the other side, I don't care. It's a question of are they gonna be a good neighbor and are they gonna destroy the roads? Which a hundred and eightieth, did somebody say on the list? That means it's gonna be a long time before it gets fixed, long time. And yes, I, I appreciate that they have offered to, to fix the road. However, are they gonna fix Joy Cliff when, when that gets, starts developing potholes? Because the weight limit's being exceeded by more than double? You gotta ask these questions, I think. That's about all I got.
All right. Thank you. Had another gentleman in the back.
I just wanna pass around some copies that y'all already know about farrier ordinances and I highlighted some of the areas that I'm concerned with that I really don't think match up with, um, with the zoning. Number two, I wanna pass around this petition that I circulated in our neighborhood. And out of thirty-four houses, thirty-three or thirty-four houses in our neighborhood, twenty-five of those residences have signed that petition. Not everybody was home, but you'll read the front of the petition, you'll see what, what they read and they don't want the zoning, as I don't. And I just wanna give you a copy of what I prepared for you. Ask you so you can read it, just in case I don't speak well, so you can see for yourself what my concerns are. Asphalt companies provide a needed service to our county and I have nothing against mid-state asphalt or the people who work there. They pay taxes just like the rest of us. However, there are proper places for them to locate their operations. But a residential area, in my opinion, is not the proper place. I think we all want progress in our county. If someone wants to sell or rent their house, do you think the sight of big trucks or asphalt equipment as you pull in is gonna help them? No. We'll lose value in our homes. Who's gonna reimburse us for the value that we lose or the future gains that may not potentially come? Which also affects the tax base, because the value of our homes affects the tax base for the county, which is used to repair those roads. I think, uh, I, from my talking with people, maybe there's some misunderstanding, but a lot of them say that they have complained. I, I hear people say that they have heard a lot of complaints, but from my talking with, when I did the petition, a lot of people said that they had complained. Um, I know that I have called planning, I've been to planning and zoning in person twice and the lady that worked there gave me a phone number to call. I called that number and never got a call back. And I know my wife, it's been about a year, year and a half ago, she called and talked to Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Martin met with the owner and talked about some of the problems with the road. I don't know why it's taken us so long to get to this point, but I'm glad we're here. There are many places in Jones County available where big trucks cannot be seen from residences and the asphalt equipment can't be seen from residences. And the trucks don't have to travel on the same streets where children ride their bicycles or people walk. There are plenty of places to locate that provide what you would need and you don't have to be in conflict with residences. Um, those places also provide a big enough area so that trucks do not have to dangerously back in and out from the road access. They can pull in, do whatever they need and pull back out, cause there's plenty of room. We had daycare at one-oh-seven Bone Creek Road, which is the house, part of the residence that has something to do with this, they're trying to get approval from. Daycare added value to our neighborhood. You can take a guess why they're not there anymore. We want the daycare. People used it in our neighborhood. It provided an asset and added value to, I believe, our homes. Do you want massive trucks riding on residential roads where your children and grandchildren ride bicycles? There have been times where I've seen those trucks, I had no idea, I couldn't understand why they were, pull past my house. I'm like, why are they pulling past my house? They have no business going, they're, they're right there. I guess stuff like that's going to happen though, you know? Maybe somebody just wasn't thinking straight and they kept going, I don't know. But, you know, it's just things that develop where things shouldn't be a certain way. Things like that are gonna happen, cause we're all human and stuff happens that shouldn't. But we can do things to decrease those instances. I think we, um, so I propose that we try to get a daycare back to, or rezone one-oh-seven to R-one. We definitely should not zone one-oh-five Bone Creek to C-two with conditions. I propose that one-oh-five, we rezone to R-one also, so we can find a family that will, wants to utilize both one-oh-five and one-oh-seven as it was initially used when there was a cabinet shop there. One-oh-five was initially zoned commercial, so from my understanding, that one Jones County residence could get an income tax benefit by putting their business by their house. And I saw to all the remaining residents of the subdivision. I don't think y'all operate that way now, but that's the way things, for some reason, operated back then, I guess. The county could rectify this matter by buying the property and making it a community center for the county and our neighborhood should utilize that. I don't want any heavy machinery being operated anywhere near our neighborhood children unless it's a septic tank being pumped, a road repair, or something that's an absolute necessity. Not something that is common, that, that's, you know, should, that's gonna have to be there all the time. Please remember, it was just over two years ago that nine-year-old Harper Thomas was killed by heavy machinery in a Houston County residential area. Curious kids climbing a fence and getting into a truck and somebody getting killed. Stuff like that needs to be kept far away from residences. We don't want that to happen here. I appreciate y'all listening to me and I appreciate what y'all are doing. Do y'all have any questions?
What's your name?
Burton Harper.
What's your address?
One-two-three Bone Creek Road.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? All right, thank you. Has anyone else got something that we haven't heard yet tonight to share with? I've got a gentleman stood up in the back first and then I'll let, uh, y'all get, y'all get a rebuttal, cause I've, I've tried to keep the, the time equal and right now they're?
My name is Stephen Peavy, I live at one-eleven Pine Tree Drive, that's further up in the neighborhood. And, uh, everything Mr. Harper says, I agree with. And talking about the neighbor, being a good neighbor and so forth like that, I don't know if it was, uh, it's known to, to you about this, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, that an altercation took place there. Uh, on November seventeenth at approximately nine-thirty a.m., deputies were summoned to a commercial location on Bone Creek Road in regards to a report of shots fired. Upon arrival, it was determined that a dispute over a parked vehicle led to firearms being brandished by multiple people. Shots were fired by two individuals resulting in a minor injury to one person. Deputies obtained multiple statements and collective physical evidence. The primary offender was identified as Jesus Antonio Obralli, Obralli of Bibb County. Uh, warrants were obtained charging Obralli with two counts of aggravated assault and one count of terroristic threats and acts. Earlier this morning, Obralli was arrested at the resident, at a residence in Bibb County without incidents. Uh, Obralli is currently in custody pending a first appearance hearing. This was pronounced November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three. So things are, tempers can flare when people are coming out there. And in fact, one time I was exiting out there and I blew the horn at a F-one-fifty or two, two-fifty that stays parked right there at that allocation. Next thing you know, they pulled over into the, right over on Joy Cliff in the Shell Acoustical Parking Lot, like, hey, come on, let's go at it. So that kind of, uh, that kind of stuff's gonna happen around there. And, and that's, it's not necessary. And as a former law enforcement officer, I don't, I don't want those things happening in my neighborhood. So that's, that's mainly what it is. And, uh, I'm the one that's always calling the sheriff's office when, when there's a vehicle. If I'm heading out or coming in, there's one, I'm calling the sheriff's office saying, hey, get the vehicle off this road. That, I'm pretty much the one that had the no parking signs put up. I, I kept on and on and on and they finally put no parking signs up. But there's also been times where some of these people have said, oh, that only applies past that sign. I can park all right here. No, that, it means no parking right here, period. So if, if this is allowed, every time I see one of the trucks there blocking the Bone Creek or right there, I'm on the line to the sheriff's office. So they're gonna be hearing from me every time. So that's what I have to say.
Quick question for you, do you think an entrance into?
I don't know, I, I think it's too small of an area to have such large trucks. This, this, this area is too small for that. They already, in, in the shop that's there, by the way, this is their, uh, what that's being used for is to work on mustangs. You always hearing them revving their engines up there and coming in, that's what it's being used for, is to work on mustangs, souping them up and so forth, right there. And then they wanna bring even these trucks in. We tolerated the, the cars revving their engines and all that for, for the time, but now that this is, and we also deal with anchor, anchor cells constantly bringing their car carriers in and out of Bone Creek, constantly. I called the sheriff's office on them as well. So I think it's too small of an area to even try to come in on Joy- So I think it's too small of an area to even try to come in on Joy Cliff, and they're going to have to do some kind of roundabout to do, they're going to, they're going to, it's too small, basically. It's what it is. And again, this is a residential neighborhood, you know, there's a place for residential, there's a place for commercial, you know? So that's all I have to say. And do you, would you wish to have, any of y'all want to have this, or that's not...
That's okay. Has anybody else got anything that we haven't heard that you want to approve of? We'll take one more. Well, I'm just, I'm not talking about, okay. Okay. This will be the, this will be the last one on the, and then we'll give the African a time to come forward.
I'm Leon Phillips, I live at 139 Bone Creek Road. Everything's pretty much been covered, two things. I agree that it's too small a lot. Why don't you turn around now? I mean, why don't you turn around instead of having to back that trailer in? I'm just asking. The lot's too small. So that's one. Number two, we got truck parking behind the fire station now. We need the income, that's tactical income, right? Let them park them there, what's wrong with that? He explained to us that he lives in a gated community, and he can't park his trucks at his gated community, but, you know, if he can afford that, let him park them at a truck parking lot, that's what it's designed for. I appreciate it.
Mr. Buckland, you'd like to come forward, you get an opportunity to come forward, or anybody with your, it'd be fine.
I got a question right quick.
I'm sorry?
Where, where is the truck parking at a fire station now?
Mr. Phillips?
Behind the fire station, where Dollar General is.
Oh, that's private property, that's somebody else's property.
Okay.
That's not ours, okay, I was just making sure.
We're trying to give both sides equal time, so you...
That's no problem, no problem at all. My name is Jim Roberts. I actually work out of that shop during the day, I'm actually currently moving, I've got my own building now, but I have never seen these guys cause an issue. I'm there anywhere from seven o'clock in the morning till almost 11 o'clock at night. Morning times, they get on their dump trucks, they literally pull out, do the year turn, come right on out, and they leave out, going down C and J's, get their fuel, they're gone for the day. So when I see them leaving, I don't see anybody out there being blocked, myself. When they get back home, it's usually typically pretty late at night. I've seen them coming, the latest 10, 11 o'clock at night, nobody's on the road, they pull up, open the gate, back in, and then I tell them, you guys good? Oh, I'm going to lock up, I'm going home, they'll lock up. I've never seen them actually block anybody. I have seen multiple people have issues with anchor, with their loading up those vehicles they have over there. I've actually got, on footage here, somebody in the neighborhood trying to run over the guy who drives for anchor or pick up the vehicles from anchor. Some of the guys who are with me, I've got video footage right here, front of the shop, where my, one of my guys was locking up the gate, and we pull off the road, because we're trying to be respectful and say out of people's way, we're just in a regular, you know, regular vehicle. So we pull off to the side, and there's video footage right here, where the guy comes speeding, hauls butt, and swerves and tries to hit my guy. I've seen that several occasions. My other guys also ran into an altercation with whoever it was down there, and same thing. So if they have a problem, I don't understand why they never came to us personally, and I don't see whether talking about a danger, but what about trying to run people over? Is that not a danger? If you're mad about a situation, be mad about it, stand up, talk, communicate. What gives you the right to try to run somebody over? You know, and I've actually went to the Jones County Police, and I put a report in, because to me, I take that as attempted manslaughter, vehicular manslaughter. My youngest son comes to the shop with me and helps me out. God helps a man who tries to run into my son. I'll tell you that right now. So I mean, if you want to look at the footage, you're more welcome to, I'll pass the phone around, you know? But as far as these guys, I've seen, I've seen whoever it is in the neighborhood have more altercations with the people of anchor than with these guys here, you know? They're literally, they leave in the mornings, go do their thing, they work all day, come back at night and park dump trucks. It's not like they're jumping in the trucks, driving around, joyriding around the neighborhood and all that, you know? So I don't, I don't see an issue with them being there myself, you know? He bought the property to park his vehicles there, the truck there. As far as that, I don't see any issue with anything else, you know? Especially with them offering to pay out of his own pocket, you know? With that road being that far down on list for repairs anyway, let them take care of it, you know? Let them take care of it. He, this man has a heart of gold, he will literally give you the shirt off his back. And I'm not just saying that because I know him. I've seen it personally, myself, to strangers, just, you know, he'll offer out help. He's a listener, if you talk to him, he will work with you, I promise you, I promise you. This man does have a heart of gold.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Commissioner Martin, this is...
I think we've heard the concerns of the neighbors, and we want to be good stewards. And I think you offered a solution, and if you're able to provide the alternate entrance that provides, I think, a benefit to them. It takes the traffic off of their streets and still meets the zoning requirement, because it was already zoned, commercial. But as far as the request goes with this C2, I want to be clear, to allow a paving company, to me, that says a paving company. What I understand you're doing is parking trucks. So is there a way to just say he can park his trucks without allowing a paving company? Because I think that is the concern of the neighbors.
Think that's a distinction without a difference?
Yep. Okay. Well, you know, I don't, I'm going to rely on the side that they're traveling home, and that'll be fine. Yes, sir?
Perhaps limits on the quantity of vehicles, so that it doesn't snowball or something else tried to come in there behind that?
There's not that much room in there to start with, so I think that's going to limit the...
Correct.
Based on existing capacity or something like that?
Yes, I think I like that. So we're at C2, based on capacity, and of course, the vehicle's being unloaded when they come in.
All four of them? There's four dump trucks?
Hold on a minute, hold on.
Is that right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I might have to ask you.
That is a motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
One second for discussion.
All right, discussion, second for...
Want to take the question about how many, the four dump trucks?
No, this discussion's us.
Yeah. So meaning the existing capacity would say yes, if that's how many they're parking there now, but I would, I like the fact of having the driveway off of Joy Cliff, because that makes a big difference to me. Because I think what we're here, and just so everybody knows, what we are here to hear is the conditional use of the property, not how it's actually happening. That is the enforcement side of it. So to me, having the conditional use in a commercially zoned property already, the fact that, the biggest complaint that I heard was coming in and out of Bone Creek, whether it's blocking traffic, having issues, tearing up the road, the safety issue with the kids, I understand all those, and see that 1,000%. Coming off, to me, coming off of Joy Cliff alleviates 90% of that. So I do appreciate that and do think that that's a viable solution. As far as not wanting a business there, because it's a residential area close to it and all that, and even when I comment about the county should buy it and make it a public area, so that would mean we're going to take it off of the tax rolls and have no taxes coming in on it, or leave it on the tax rolls as it is and have that tax coming in. You know, I think, for me, the bonus is that he's offered to pave the road. I mean, to me, it's pretty clear from the pictures that whatever business is in there and whatever they're doing is contributing to the deterioration of the road, and I think that's why he has generously offered to repair that part of the road. So repairing the road and having the entrance off of Joy Cliff, to me, eliminates the problems, and that's why, you know, seconded the motion.
Any more discussion? If none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Piszowski?
Our next item is the request by Clinton Methodist Church for conditional use to allow an existing addition to be demolished and then rebuilt larger. This is located at 110 Old Highway 18. This property does lie in historic overlay, the planning commission, the historic preservation commission has approved this request. Planning commission also has recommended approval of this request.
Clinton. Methodist Church representative? How you do, sir?
Gordon Green, representing the administrative board of Clinton Methodist Church. As Tim has said, we have a, about seventy-year-old cinder block annex that we use for Sunday school and receptions and that sort of thing, and has the bathrooms that we use for the church. We decided that after seventy years, that's probably got the goodie out of that one, and we're proposing to put something that looks more like the church in its place. And that's basically the bottom line, will we tear down what we have there and put in new, new facility with new bathrooms. We've already got health department approval for a new septic tank, all that sort of thing.
Any questions?
What's the square footage of your addition?
1,300.
Okay, so what is it now?
I knew you were going to ask that question. It's probably about a thousand. It's slightly bigger, but we're constrained by the historical grave that are there, so we can't make it very much bigger anyway. But yeah, it's a slight increase in size. Excuse me?
It'll complement the church.
Yes, it'll be, the siding will be, instead of cinder block, it'll be siding matched to the church, and it'll be lower, and you won't be able to really see it from the road like you can now, because it's behind the church, and it's going to be smaller than the church.
Any other questions? Anyone here tonight opposed for this request? It's commissioners, yours.
It's about that far into Jones.
I know it has to, that line goes through there somewhere, all right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Ayes have it, thank you.
Chairman, our final zoning item is a request by Stephen Powell, it's a variance to allow an additional dwelling on a substandard private road. This is located at 618 Cumzlo Road, consisting of 5.47 acres, and are, because this is a variance, there is not a recommendation from the planning commission.
Ms. Powell, are you here tonight? Welcome.
My name's Brian Young, I live at 618 Cumzlo Road. Stephen's my stepson. I'm here representing him, he's got a sick daughter, that's why he couldn't be here. But we're asking for a variance to allow a double-wide trailer on my property, which I've had one before that I lived in before I built my house, and he's wanting to put it in that exact same spot.
Any questions? Anyone opposed for this request?
I make a motion to accept the variance to allow the additional dwelling on the block.
Second. Any discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we work, consent agenda approved for minutes, we're busy. Work session on March 17th, along with another work session on March 18th, public care on March 18th, third Tuesday, March 18th, and executive session. If y'all have had an opportunity to review the minutes, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? None? All in favor, aye? Ayes have it. Chief, you got your name on this one? You didn't know you were going to get called at, did you?
Well, I did, I seen it, I seen it.
You seen it on there, so you're...
Takes a kind of comment into it. This is only just going to take a second, this is for the MOU between the county and George 4th Street. The reason we're having to sign another one is because they changed the lead ranger from Marcus over to Ricky Williams. Anytime they do a lead change, they have to get a new MOU signed. And what this MOU covers is us utilizing their equipment, but we maintain their equipment upon our Jones County status, as we have been for years, as well as operating upon the mutual aid agreement with them and so forth, and it's just a generic thing, saying, hey, we're working with them, they're working with us, and like I say, we just haven't signed it again, just because they changed lead hands.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? That's easy, wasn't here, you need my signature, too. Right there.
Yeah, I'll give you more.
Okay, all right, good. Lorinda?
I'm glad you're doing this, I had a good time up there.
Oh, yeah.
Did you tear it up?
No, I didn't tear it up, they let me play with it and everything.
Didn't call me. Didn't call me. It's okay.
It was last minute, it's okay, yeah. Last minute.
I didn't get a call either.
Yeah, it's okay. All right, thank you.
We're going to let y'all see what we're talking about.
You got Jerry on the running cat controls, John Deere controls, I don't know what I'm going to do, y'all. You can't run cat, he might control that.
Which mode did you try? John Deere or that?
Oh, I'm good on John Deere, but I failed both of them, I had to play with it, see if I could turn it over to standing back up, so I think I passed.
Okay, so what we are presenting is a pilot program, this is an example agreement of something that, you know, the county attorney could look at and revise if needed, but this is just a sample. Back in January, I reached out to Ms. Lisa here about the simulators. I was kind of joking at first that it might be nice if we could train people on simulators, and then I found out there is such a thing, and that the high school had it. So when I did some research on how expensive those simulators are, they are in the millions, I believe, and so of course it wasn't feasible to ask for these simulators, so instead I contacted Ms. Lisa about possibly setting up something where we could do some training using the simulators that they already have, as well as some other things, so that Jones County Board of Education and Jones County Board of Commission could benefit each other and maybe start some kind of a partnership, essentially. So this is just going over the different things that we would be agreeing to. If you look at the second one, for instance, it mentions that we'd be agreeing to be able to use the classroom simulators, and we would have a teacher there, so we'll go more into that a little bit later. Number three talks about how Jones County Board of Commissioners could kind of pick from four employees, they could go over the dates and the specifics at a later date as well, and I'm going to let Ms. Lisa and Mr. De Naro talk about the pilot training sessions and compensation for a second, before we go into the next part as well.
Good evening, how are y'all? What we thought about doing would be an eight-hour session, that would do four hours a night for two nights, and this training would include all the basic safety, would teach them the basic maneuverability of the excavator, and then we would get into more of the digging in trench, loading trucks, and placing pipes and trench boxes. So it'd give them that ability to have that familiarization and the training to be able to get on the rail and maybe not damage it.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Collins, and I serve as the proud Academy CEO and CTAE Director for the College and Career Academy here, and I want to thank you for this opportunity, and thank you, Lorinda, for the phone call. We love having industry partners and community members come in and see the awesome that we have. For this partnership, I need to make sure that everybody is aware this is an intergovernmental agreement. We do not have the capacity to train everyone in our local or regional area on our simulators. So we want to be good stewards and good partners with our other governmental agencies, and we think this is a great opportunity to do that. In terms of compensation, so I asked Mr. De Naro to make a few phone calls to find out what is the compensation, and what we discovered after talking to a couple of different organizations that we partner with that do something similar to this, not at a school level, but actual training, and they said, oh, $1,500 a person, and we were both like, what? No, we're not doing that, because we just need a small amount to compensate for Mr. De Naro's time during the summer. We have four simulators... We have four simulators, so we would have four people max, because we want everyone to have the opportunity to be on a simulator. In the classroom, that's a different scenario with his students, they have a classroom component in a simulator. But for this pilot, they'll be on it right away and we could have a capacity of, of, um, four. So what we're proposing is a hundred dollars per hour for a total of eight hundred dollars. And then we had some discussion, Lorinda and I, about ways that we could have some in-kind. So for example, when our students learn to use the equipment, it's great to be on the simulator. They do have vision trips with different companies that we work with to go out and get on the real iron. But we would like to do that possibly with Public Works as well. And we also, who knows, there might be a pipeline. There might be a student or two that would really be interested in working for the county and being a part of, further a part of our community. So compensation-wise, we're just talking about a hundred dollars per hour for eight hundred dollars. We also, it's important that this training occur the first or second week after the end of our school year. For safety reasons and having people come on campus, when students are there, we need to make sure that our students aren't there. And then we wanna make sure we're not too far into the summer where our instructor would be on vacation. We wanna keep everyone happy, him and his wife and everyone.
I'm excited about the partnership. 'Cause I, I think, I know I've been talking about it for years and every time, since you guys have had the simulator, I've been excited about it. I don't know how that aligns with bringing onboarding employees, um, you know. So I, I wish that it was more flexible, because if we bring on a guy in February, they have to wait till June and then it may not mesh. So work out flexibility if that's possible, but I'm all for it. I think an employee here should meet the background requirements. Initially.
Well, and during the school day, it's, we're full on.
Right.
We don't have, we do not have any seating capacity during the school day.
Like after school, if he's around. Just saying.
What did you prepare from?
Teaching. CTAE. And specialty.
CTAE? Were you JROTC?
No, no, no. Business and, um, computers.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
I can honestly say it's the closest thing to the real machine there is.
It'd be a big asset, I mean, safety-wise is my main.
Right.
Especially with a new employee or, you know. Always just not familiar with that type of equipment.
Right.
It's hard to get hurt up there unless they fall asleep.
They make you wear the, they make you wear, they make you wear the seatbelt. I could cross my legs and, you know, have my cup of coffee there in my hand, 'cause I, you know, I had to wear the seatbelt. But, um, the ability to, now, I, I guess you were trained on, on, on cat controls, weren't you? Let's see, I'm just opposite. I, I've got forty-five years of John Deere controls, which matches the excavator, the rubber tire, hoe, and rustles.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a kind of-.
If we need you.
I'm sorry?
If we need you, call them up.
Now, we did discover when you came, which we're thankful, we didn't know, you said, where's the, I'm gonna switch or flip or something.
Yeah, flip, switch, you know.
Right.
To switch it over, and I said, wait a minute. This, a million dollars per machine plus, we've gotta have it somewhere, there's gotta be something. So I called our, um, cat person and sure enough, it's in the settings. So we're grateful for that conversation, so we can switch the controllers.
Right.
Do you wanna say? Oh, okay. I, I'm looking forward to it, because, you know, we've both talked about what, we've got an industrial park that needs a lot of dirt moved around. And it's, would be a perfect place for kids to learn to work some heavy equipment.
Yeah. I think the twofold is, I, I think it's amazing that we have, we can reduce our accidents, we can, we can reduce the damage to our equipment. And we get training for employees that are not, you know, doing that every day. And we also, like you said, create that pipeline so that our, our big win would be a kid graduates.
Eighteen years old and being able to work heavy equipment.
And he's our top operator, six months later.
Well, the department had that, they had somebody go straight from the programs with them using the internship.
And we have, through our work-based learning, we have students currently who are, who are heavy equipment operators through this program, through work-based learning.
Is there a limitation on our insurance as far as who can work on heavy equipment?
Nothing that I know of, I don't know that we've ever, uh, had reason to dig into it a whole lot, but I don't, I don't know of anything there that would cause any problems.
Insurance covers students, so we should, you have two governmental agencies.
We had a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, we have four seconds.
Four seconds.
So that's gonna make four ayes.
Four ayes? I'll take four ayes. I'll take five ayes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Part two is bringing the kids. Okay, uh, old business, after the petition of the Superior Court's recommendations, Mr. Rizner, you wanna?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, William Nolan wasn't able to join us tonight, so I'm gonna do, uh, the best I can with this. So on, uh, March nineteenth, a hearing was held in Jones County Superior Court before Judge Petty on the, um, on the removal of the two Board of Tax Assessors members. We have since that time received the order from Judge Petty. And her, her recommendation in this situation is that you do have cause to remove, uh, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Morgan from the Board of Tax Assessors if, if the Board of Commissioners sees fit. So, um, so it's, in terms of the process that's laid out in the state law, it's come before you, it's gone to Superior Court. Now it's back to, uh, to this board to make a final determination.
Any questions for Mr. Rizner? If none?
Chairman, I make a motion, um, after receiving the recommendation from Superior Court Judge, um, I make a motion that we move forward with the removal of the tax assessors remaining board members, uh, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Morgan. Remove them from the Jones County Board of Tax Assessors effective immediately.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Done? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right. All right. Moving forward, department heads. Everybody's gone.
Well, we do have, um, Mr. Jim Davis back there.
Mr. Jim Davis, you got anything you'd like to say tonight?
He's got some papers in the same.
Department heads, you got anything you wanna say tonight? Come on forward. That's all right. You didn't, I think you've uneducated everybody on this board, haven't you?
Just wanna give y'all a little update. I have actually been, uh, called by one company that's just gonna respond to the revaluation request, RFP. Had some questions about particulars, so I know we got one, I think there'll be more than that. And I have met with the, uh, the, uh, company that does ninety-five counties in Georgia of the air photography. And, uh, they've actually given me a preliminary estimate based on an estimated square footage, uh, square miles in Jones County. I've mentioned it to the administrator. He is gonna be back in, he lives in Alabama, but he covers Georgia and Alabama. He's gonna be back in this area second week in April. And I'd like to, if I can arrange the proper time, maybe through the administrator, that I can make a presentation to y'all. The, the photographer we've got now is, uh, very vague. There was, but the quote he's given me preliminary was for three-inch resolution. And so it's just like the difference in vague and very clear. He gave me some examples. In any event, I'd like to schedule him to come back, uh, at the proper time and give y'all a presentation to see what. I had hoped we could get it done soon, like through this year. Leasur progressed to the point where it's just not practical to do it for this year. But in, in November, he would propose they could do it in November and have it available, uh, for our revaluation effort in two thousand twenty-six. So, um, I'll proceed with that if, if y'all are interested. And, uh, certainly, uh, that's good news, at least one company, and the company's name is Technical Appraisal as far as revaluation. And, uh, I think, uh, they'll meet the deadline for, based on the RFP, so I look forward to that and I hope we'll get more than one. So, uh, and we're, uh, we do have some additional employees in the office now, one of former members contracted, uh, former member of staff, I should say. He's retired, but he's contracting. And Ms., uh, Ms. Riley's working, uh, part-time and they're trying to catch, cut up on the permit work. Because we were way behind in permit work that was done, that taken out in two thousand twenty-four, should go on the digest for the first of this year. So, uh, we're behind on that, but that's being worked on with the extra help. And other than that, we're just proceeding towards, uh, some dual, dual legs too. We're working on twenty-five digest to get it up to date. We do have one change in law, uh, House Bill ninety-two, it just has passed the House and the Senate hasn't been signed yet, but it's gonna require, uh, I might mention to y'all, since y'all voted to opt out, this particular bill would give you a chance to opt back in after we get things fixed. Doesn't require you to do it, but I think that's one of the issues in the House Bill ninety-two, if the governor signs it, would it be effective January first of twenty-five? And also has some changes to the assessment notice that we have to incorporate. Used to be you had to put an estimated taxes out there, and now it's gonna be, it's gonna be an estimated rollback rate. So that's gotta be, revenue departments already said they're gonna incorporate that into the design to put out. So that's all in the works too, and we'll get that incorporated within the, before the assessment notice will go out for Jones County for twenty-five. So kind of a lot going on, uh, but we're progressing and, uh, making progress a little at a time. So any questions?
We appreciate you.
So I assume now that you've removed two, that you got a real point, right? So, uh, look forward to having the full board again, so.
Any question?
Related to that, I- I, I did mean to ask the board, um, as part of that agenda item, how you wanna handle, uh, I think we have gotten some additional applications in for, um, Board of Assessors members. And so I wanted to ask the board how y'all wanted to handle that, that we wanna schedule interviews with those like we did the others, or, or what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Absolutely. Work session, the interview as we did in the past.
Okay.
And, uh-
Well, I've got you here.
And we appreciate your support.
The, the members, and this is just, it's happened to another county. What happens if we appoint somebody and they can't pass the?
You appoint somebody to tag in?
If we appoint somebody to the board and they're not capable of passing the test, what happens then?
Well, they couldn't, until they, they get, they get a year to take that forty-hour exam and pass it. But if they don't go, then effectively they shouldn't, shouldn't sit for hearings and appeals. But we get them scheduled as soon as the class is available.
But what if they don't pass it? What if they take the class, but then they don't pass the test?
It's just like not taking it. You have to go try to take it again. And some, some assessors have repeated, have repeated it and finally passed it. But, I mean, that'd be part of the responsibility of, of being qualified to serve, is to take that exam, take that test and take the course and pass the test.
I just learned, I just learned that from, the county had two people that couldn't pass it and that pretty much refused, I think, to take it again. So, uh, that was, I asked somebody that I'm sure knew, which is, you know.
Of course, in my opinion, not, not a lawyer, it's not a legal opinion, but clearly, if you appointed somebody and they ultimately didn't pass it or couldn't, then I think you'd basically have to appoint somebody else. Give them a chance to take the course and pass it. So, uh, you don't wanna have an assessor or an appraiser who's not current, according to the state. As we talked about before, you wanna have everybody current with their hours. And of course, after that first test, they gotta take forty hours over two years to be current.
Check to see if we have a policy regarding that, and if we don't, let's draft that, so we're prepared for that?
Yes.
Yes.
We can do that, yes, sir. I'm not sure if you'd have a policy in place at this point, and a county policy as opposed to a Board of Assessors policy, you're talking about a county policy.
Yes.
Right.
We don't have one.
We don't have one.
Not, not the Board of Commissioners.
That was, that was, uh, somebody gave me a heads up, say, you need to, you know, be careful because this has happened to us. So, uh, it's kinda nice, we learn so much at these meetings and whatnot for what not to do. You know, we learn a lot from people like yourself, you know, to do this. But there was, we learned just as much as from every other people, other counties' mistakes, that whatever you do, don't do this, you know. And, uh, you'd be surprised how much it saves you, 'cause, uh, you know, mistakes can-
I have every confidence that, Mr. Chairman, you and these other board members would not appoint somebody who couldn't pass the exam. I'll leave it at that.
All right. We appreciate you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rizner, you got anything? Uh, citizen comments now, anybody like to come forward with citizen comments? None? I guess we'll start with commissioner comments.
Good news. Dick G. Doc called me yesterday, I let, there will be no rumble strips on Highway eleven. It was a very joint effort from Commissioner Wood, several citizens that called and, and, uh, when I told them if they take, if they put rumble strips where they're gonna put the bicycles at, they better be, you know, thinking about a bike lane. And they cited the rumble strips weren't needed on Highway eleven. That's great. Wish, if only I had a lady in your district said that you and, and Mr. Kitchens need to give me that, that, uh-
You're lying.
Your mama did. Yeah, your mama said that.
That's the first your mama of the year.
Your mama? Where you see my mama?
I saw her today at the, uh, garden club, and she said, I believe with a hundred and ninety tires, you ought to get the, the award. But there's no placard for team chairman, so, uh, I'm just telling you, we're gonna have that placard for next year. And, uh, the two of y'all.
Hey, we're gonna have to go hit up some folks for some tires next year, ain't we?
Ms. Wong, you wanna hand the?
Yes, where is the trophy?
You can, kinda.
I give with, that was the first thing on my list, see right there? Uh, where is it, is the trophy out there?
No, no.
Go get it. All right, so first and foremost, good job to District One on Keep Jones County Clean Day, job well done. You had some great support out there. You know, I hate that Carrie has to get up at six o'clock in the morning as you crack that whip and make her go start picking up trash at six in the morning.
She gets up at six, she won't start picking up trash at six.
Yeah, whatever. I also wanted to thank Peewee and Sarah, along with Tiffany, for manning the tire detail. Oh, yeah, Brennan was out there too, he was quite dirty. I don't know if that's 'cause he was playing in the dirt or if he was actually busy, okay. Okay, okay, I give it to him then. I'm glad to hear about the aerial photography, that he was able to get in with somebody that quick. State Place Cemetery, um, that just came across our desk this week, that they're gonna, we're planning a cleanup day on May the sixth. And, um, I, I keep telling somebody that's in this room that I'm gonna volunteer them for a duty. So, um, Ms. Eda and Ms. Roslin, would y'all like to help us out with getting in contact with all the local churches to set this day on their calendar? And come together as a community to come and help us with the cleanup day and freshening up the graves at the State Place Cemetery?
Okay, we'll, we'll help come up with a flyer and everything to help pass out. That would be great. We've come together with some church names to send everything to also, but I think word of mouth is gonna be our best bet on getting that out. I was gonna make sure I let Ms. Ruby know personally also. So that would be great if y'all can help us out with that. So, see, I told you I was gonna get you somehow.
Also, ribbon cutting on April the fourth at five thirty at the pickleball courts. I hope I love ya. Since Sam won't play a game against me, Daylon, will you play a game of pickleball against me?
When?
This coming up Friday.
I will be back right across Georgia.
Always an excuse with you guys.
I got grandkids.
Well, they can come.
I could, could, yeah.
They could come, they would love it. Yes. They've actually started a youth program with lots of kids down at the court, so if y'all have never went and watched pickleball, or never heard of it, it's growing very fast. It was just four years ago that I actually connected Jonathan Pitts and Michelle and Brian Craddock. It was my memory from four years ago, making the connection for them to get the temporary nets up at the tennis courts. So we've grown a lot in four years, so. I think that's it, yeah.
Commissioner Martin?
Listen, I, I'm excited that the program has come to fruition from the standpoint that our employees will get to participate, I kind of wanted that pipeline coming this way, but, you know, this is a first step, and I see the opportunity growing from the standpoint that we can hopefully place some kids in the industrial park and let them work, you know, they, we will have less fear of them tearing up equipment, because they'll probably have more training than some of our employees. And I think that there's a win-win, even if we employ just a couple each year, and then during the summer, using some workforce development money, you know, we might be able to get a bunch done. So, excited about that, thank you.
Commissioner Wood?
I'm excited also about the workforce or training opportunity between the school and the, how it should help out. Lot of things there. Good work session for the fire department today, that was informative, and if you weren't here, that, you know, go back and watch it. And congratulations on your trash pickup.
Oh, yeah.
And I think, as I told Chairman on Saturday afternoon or Sunday, he gets tire war of the year, because I saw him going through town with a huge, huge load.
Hundred thousand tires.
And I know he made impact all, all across the county. So, congratulations.
Just out of curiosity, there was some company, and I, I can't remember if it was Naco or something else that I went to, they were shredding the tires and making mulch out of it.
Right.
They do that in Jackson?
Yeah, is there an opportunity for us to maybe shred some tires and sell some mulch?
We don't, we, that's not in our budget for that machine.
I didn't say in our budget.
Ship it to them, huh?
Yeah, it's like, you know.
We could give Tiffany, see if that's a grant opportunity that, that would help us get them there. Because right now, they're doing the amnesty, just to pay us an amount to dispose of them.
That's a state grant, right?
They may end up there, I don't know if they go to.
Yeah, but that's a huge product, process too, because once it chops, they have to magnetize the wire out of it.
Some of the mulch does not have the wire out of it, by the way, it's just cut.
Something worth looking into with Tiffany.
And Mr. Kitchens?
Yeah, it was, it was a good day, and I agree, my youngest son was in charge of picking up tires in our, our area, and he put the trailer on the back of the truck, and he got, I don't know, he probably had fourteen or fifteen tires, and he called me, he said, Pop, I got this one, I got this one, you all see how many tires I picked up, went down this road, this road, and I was like, okay, son, I don't want to hurt your feelings, but I saw a picture of Chris had on his trailer, you know, I was like, he said, oh, no, I can, I can get him, I got, I got the trailer full. All right, I think he had ten or twelve, and he was so excited about it, he got up there, just shook his head, but, you know, we had a, a smaller turnout this year, I mean, we competed with Cherry Blossom Prom, what else did we have, they had a, two golf tournaments in Macon, we had something, opening day for something else.
Turkey season.
And opening day of turkey season, five, five or six things we were, and beautiful weather, people were wanting to get out and about, so we were competing with a lot of stuff, but I think it was a huge turnout, we, we picked up a lot of trash, I mean, we could have twenty more people in twenty more days to get the, the whole community clean, but it's a good thing, it's friendly competition, it's so fun, and, and people that do it every year really look forward to it. I shout it out to one kid that's Clifton Ridge, FBLA, him and his mom came in, they had an event to go to down in South Georgia, so they can only stick around to like nine o'clock, and they said, we're gonna pick up from River North down to the park on both sides of the road, and we'll leave the bags at the park. I said, I'll go by and pick them up, no problem. And so this kid got up at daylight and was up there by seven-thirty picking up the roads and put them in bags, and that was really cool that he would do that before he left at nine, nine-thirty to go.
That's a great family that helps you out every year.
Yeah, they always do, River North family always helps out, so that's, that's a good thing, and I, I hope we keep doing it, and thank you to all of our, our staff, I mean, Jerry and Haley, Mallory. What's his name, Joe?
Yes, Joe.
That was up there getting the.
The Pilot Club for helping out Chris and Renee.
Yeah, Pilot Club, Commissioner Martin, they got Garrison Road, and they didn't make it but Avalon, and they had all the trucks full.
They did.
But, yeah, Jerry, Tiffany, and all them that were over at Public Works with the tires, that was a monumental task, so. There's a lot of, a lot goes into it for a quick, for a quick event to weigh in, and so. Yeah, had it made until.
I went to pick up some trash, because the special needs group at the high school, the kids that are advancing and fixing to be out of the high school age, they normally helped me on Saturday mornings and go pick up in front of the school and everything. Well, they had an event themselves to go to, so they picked up on Saturday, and they told me where the bags were at, so nobody would bother them. I went and picked them up, thinking I was getting eight bags, well, two bags of them were full of golf cart tires.
Yeah, it was a good event, though, I thank everybody that comes out.
All right, with that being said.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I gotta do one more thing. I think this day is appropriate for this, for this announcement, I'm announcing my twenty-fiftieth retirement date.
Twenty-fifty?
Yeah. Isn't this the right day to do it?
Twenty-fifty?
It's April Fool's Day, get off of this hill.
Nobody's ever gave in about twenty-fifty retirement date, so.
I thought you were serious.
Twenty-fifty, I mean, yeah, I, I hope to retire by then.
We have a citizen that wants to, I think we got a citizen that wants to say something.
I hope you are able to retire early and enjoy that you retire, whatever that means.
Hey, just, yeah, come on up for it, introduce yourself one more time, I know we.
Bert Harper, I live on one-two-three Bone Creek Road. What is the appeals process for this, is there an appeal, there is one, right?
I think the Board of Commissioners is the final decision-maker on something like that, it goes through planning and zoning and then comes here for.
Because I was like, this guy's willing to, you know, pave the road, if he's got that much money to do that, it would be better utilized in making a privacy fence to protect the beauty of our subdivision.
We, wow, that would have been a reasonable consideration, that had we thought about that, to ask for the buffer zone.
Well, I did not think that y'all would have approved it, to be honest with you at all, and so I was like, why in the world would?
We'll ask, yeah, we'll ask.
So, but, and, and the other thing is, is that it's still gonna be, if he's back, he would have to go in, pull in and pull out, and not be backing in and out, because it's gonna be even worse on Joy Cliff as far as the traffic is concerned, because there's a lot of traffic there. There's not a lane he can pull off onto or anything like that, it's just a whole thing. Just those two things, and, because I, I mean, I guess we're gonna have to eat this, so.
Well, just for the record.
If the privacy fence is something that you would like us to ask him about, that we.
Yeah, but we've already made a decision.
The decision, yeah.
We can ask, we can ask, but just for, for my nine years.
There's, there's no way, there's no way for us, if y'all are going to, to do it, you know, so there, there should be an appeals process, because there's no way for us to do that, after a decision to add, if you decide you're gonna go, okay, this is what we're gonna do, there's no way for us to go, oh, okay, that's they're gonna do this, so, well, what about at least making it, try to make it at least, you know, at least we're able to swallow it a little bit, you know, if we can, if we can have something to, you know, keep the beauty of our, of our subdivision.
But for the record, I mean, in nine, my nine years of sitting here, I've had one complaint, and it was, there's two different companies that, the complaint I had was about eight years ago, when Rick Baron was still alive, they were loading vehicles on the, on the, the road in between there, right where we're talking about y'all's road.
Yes.
And I called Rick up, and I said, Rick, I just had somebody call, are you blocking the road? And he says, let me look, and I said, at least leave one lane though, so, I mean, it's, it's a, it's not just, not, not just that business, I mean, both businesses are contributing to, you know, but the fact that he's coming in, you know, it could have been a reasonable request for privacy fence, but until, till now, we hadn't even thought about it, and we could, we could ask him.
If the process was a little bit different, then we could, you know, people could suggest things like that.
Sure.
But, I mean, I just couldn't believe that it would have passed, and, and so I was like, didn't have my mind on anything like that, because I'm like, isn't, to me, there's no way it would have, it's just not, anyway, there's no need going through all that anymore. Anyway, so, so I mean, if, I guess we'll try to think of an appeal process of our own, but if y'all would ask them to do that, we would appreciate it, just tell them, rather than putting money on paving a road out there, put a fence around it, so, you know, because at some point, I may want to sell my house, and people aren't gonna pull in my subdivision and go like, yay, they've got some, they got a bunch of asphalt stuff right there, that's gonna really, you know what I'm saying, I mean, a car repair shop, that's not too bad, a daycare is beautiful, and I hate, I hate it that they, they raised that lady's rent so she couldn't stay there anymore, because the daycare was a beautiful part of our, it really helped us out. But, anyway. I appreciate it, I'll ask again, and if y'all could help me with that, I guess I'll be calling you if y'all come up with any ideas.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
Second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming.